Welcome everyone, good evening. I'm calling the Southborough School Committee K to eight. Meeting to order on April ninth, 2025, and it is six thirty PM. All board members or committee members are present, and our first order business is school choice public hearing. So with that all open, what we're hearing?
Sure. So as the committee knows, the Interschool District Choice Program is established by Mass General Law and has been in place since nineteen ninety-one. Basically, it allows parents to enroll their children in districts outside their town of residence. And by law, all schools in the Commonwealth presume to participate in school choice unless the school committee votes to withdraw. And before they can vote, it requires a public hearing. And so as the school committee knows, I am recommending that the school committee withdraw from school choice for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year for a few reasons. First, the financial disparity. The amount of funding the district receives for a choice student is five thousand dollars per pupil. The actual per pupil expenditure in Southborough is a little over twenty-two thousand dollars, so there's a disparity between what it actually costs and what we receive in terms of funding. And then secondly, class size and capacity. So as we look at class size, we don't have a lot of capacity to add additional students. Once we accept students in a school choice, they remain in the district of choice through that period of time. So it's outgrowth situation we threw grade eight. And for those two reasons, I'm recommending the school committee withdraw from school choice, which is a vote later on.
Any comments? Question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be curious, currently, like, what's the volume of students that would fall into that category of students that are outside of our district or town?
So it would be dependent on the school committee. So the school committee could say, we have school choice spaces in grade one. We could say, in all grades. And really, the school committee sets the number of students it would accept. And then it's by lottery. So if you had ten spaces in first grade, and there were fifteen families, then it would be by lottery. It's really determined by the school committee.
What other, are there other nearby districts that do participate in school choice?
Yes, many, there are many districts that do participate primarily for financial reasons. They need the additional funding. They might see declining enrollment and adding school choice students as a funding resource for them. Once you enroll, and once you start school choice and receive the funding, most districts become dependent on that funding, and it's hard to withdraw from school choice at that point in time.
The funding is just, in total, is just the five thousand dollars per pupil?
Correct.
And then Greg, can you maybe reiterate for them too? Like, once the student is enrolled, it's not like they're in there for that year and then that's it. It's throughout their educational.
Correct. If you enroll a kindergartner in school choice, that family and student has a right to remain in the district through eighth grade. And because we are a separate district at Algonquin, if Algonquin was not a school of choice district, we drew from school choice, the student would then have to go back to its district of residence.
Any more comments from the committee on school choice? Any comments from the public on school choice? Alright, so with that, I'll move that we close the school choice public hearing. For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pass this to you, Libby Lewis, thank you. Alright, next on our agenda is special recognition. So we have a committee member who graciously stepped forward to fill the remainder of this year after her term had ended already. So Kamali O'Neely, we're thrilled that you were able to fill that void for us for the last seven or eight months. I think that it was, it was, it was great to have you just fit into the role you hadn't been gone that long. And we appreciate all of your insight and expertise and just experience that you've had on this committee. And I, I am greatly going to miss you. I think you bring a very unique perspective for us, as, as we all do, and I think that's what makes a great committee. So thank you for all of your years of work and dedication to the school committee, and I know that you'll continue to be involved as a parent and a committee member. So just want to recognize you this evening. Greg, do you have anything?
No, I echo Chelsea's comments and have always appreciated your advocacy for students and pushing us to make sure we're doing the best we can for the organization. I know that you still will be involved, maybe just not on the school committee, but in other aspects of the work. And look forward to that continued partnership in those settings.
Thank you both, appreciate that. Bye.
So I would like to echo the echo, I guess. So you and I have served longer together on this committee than anyone else, and I'd just like to say, I'm sorry to see you leave. You've really brought a lot to this committee. Made me think a lot about things, and you will be greatly missed. But I know you're not going to be a stranger.
No.
Thank you, thank you for that, Roger.
I was looking down to see if there was cake.
Oh, okay. I'll just say to everyone, it doesn't feel like, the time did go by fast this last school year. And yeah, I'm not going, I'm not moving. I'll still be here in Southborough, contributing on different committees, and you know, I, even before I was on the school committee, the teachers are, you know, will get an email or a visit or a volunteer. So I'll use my opportunity that way. And I just really, really believe that the school district can keep improving, and these last five years have shown me that we, this elected committee are a representation of the town, and that we can really make a difference for the students, as well as the teachers and the administration, and maybe even we'll see in the facilities and in an actual building going forward. So it was a great learning experience. I'm glad that I can contribute whatever skills that I have in order to help make things better. And yeah, I'll look forward to continue to working with you all in the next, you know, as we go forward. So thank you, and thank you for taking the time to, you know, wish me well, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to take a brief recess, so we're going to come back in about ten minutes at six forty now, come back at six fifty. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again, everybody, appreciate it.
Alright, we're back in session at six fifty-three. Next on our agenda is public comment. So if anybody has any comments. I think she can turn it to you.
So Andrea Hamilton, one nineteen North Borough Road. So I'm speaking today on the vote on grade five at Trotter Year that's scheduled for tonight. I'm a parent of a sixth grader and a second grader, so the decisions made here directly impact me and my family. Over the years, I've tried to stay informed about our school building needs. As part of that, I read through the research that was posted on the new NEARI FAQ regarding grade configuration. I was surprised that none of the studies presented by the building committee directly addressed the five to eight question, even though they were being referenced as the reason to keep fifth grade at Trotter Year. From my reading, there were two clear themes. One, that there are many factors that are more important to student success than grade configuration. And two, to the extent that there is any consensus, it is not that fifth grade doesn't belong in middle school, it's that sixth graders are not ready to integrate into a full middle school program. Per the committee's own research, our current six to eight model is outdated and unpreferred. In reading through the posted studies, I could only find one reference to a five to eight school. It was from a Department of Education survey of school configurations, and presented it as a positive alternative to six to eight. In this school, the fifth and sixth graders are clustered and offered a hybrid experience. They spend most of the day in a single homeroom, but also have opportunities for blended classrooms, classes during certain periods based on student level and need. The seventh and eighth graders are also clustered and behave more like a traditional middle school. And this isn't just in the literature. Our own neighbors in Lincoln recently completed a new school project where they combined into a cyclical pre-K to eight building. Within that, they chose to administratively create a pre-K to four school and a separate school with grades five to eight. What we are presenting is a bad option, other highly respected districts are doing intentionally. I would urge the district to listen to its own research and not see the five to eight discussion as pushing fifth graders into an early middle school setting, but rather the opportunity to create two distinct age cohorts within this building and provide our sixth graders with a more age-appropriate education. Finally, I want to address the line in the NEARI building FAQ that says there is not widespread support for fifth graders being in the middle school. I have not seen any data regarding that statement, but I'm a parent and member of the community. I have a sixth grader at Trotter Year, and I've seen firsthand the limits and challenges of the six to eight model. I also have a second grader who will be impacted by whatever decisions are made over the next month. I have skin in this game beyond just dollars, and I support a grade five to eight Trotter Year. Thank you.
New business, principals report. Mr. Richardson.
Yes, thank you. So I'll present Finn, NEARI, Trotter Year, and then I'll end with Woodward. Yep. So the Finn School is proud to announce, in addition to their classrooms, Cozy Corners, made possible through the thoughtful efforts of teachers Jeanette Morgan and Jennifer Glynn, and a generous grant from the Southborough Community Fund. This exciting initiative will soon expand calming, supportive spaces to many of the Finn School classrooms, reflecting the commitment to the emotional well-being of every Finn student. This initiative was born out of a series of staff conversations around extending the Finn School's mindfulness work and supporting students' social emotional wellness. This effort is rooted in a shared belief, every classroom should foster not only academic success, but also provide a safe, calming environment where children can pause, self-regulate, and care for their emotional needs. The Cozy Corners concept was introduced earlier this year, with teachers modeling its use and making it an integral part of the classroom culture. The Finn School is also thrilled to celebrate the overwhelming success of this year's Finn annual SOS fundraiser. Thanks to the incredible generosity of the Finn families and community members, more than eighteen thousand dollars was raised in support of our students, classrooms, and school-wide enrichment initiatives. The Finn SOS parent group, Principal Ryan, and the entire Finn School staff extend heartfelt thanks to every parent, guardian, and community member who contributed to this meaningful NEARI is excited to share the success of their first school-wide community book study, centered on the anxious generation by Jonathan Haidt. This initiative began as a professional practice goal for the staff to explore the rise in mental health challenges among young people, particularly the impact of declining play-based childhoods and increased spontaneous, excuse me, and increased smartphone usage, not spontaneous. Recognizing the value of this conversation beyond their faculty, they invited parents and community members to join them in a shared discussion. On Thursday, April third, over thirty parents, community members, and a few of Algonquin Regional High School students engaged in thoughtful dialogue, raising insightful questions and sharing personal perspectives. The evening was a testament to the power of the collective learning, fostering deeper connection among our adult community members. Energized by the success, they are eager to continue this initiative and look forward to launching another community book study next year. On Thursday, March twenty-seventh, NEARI had the pleasure of welcoming families to the incoming grade four parent orientation. This event provided parents and caregivers with important information about school procedures, programs, and opportunities such as band, orchestra, and chorus. As planned, this was a parent caregiver-only session, with students set to experience their own tour during Step Up Day in June. It was a wonderful evening of engagement, and we appreciate all who joined us to learn more about the transition to NEARI. Kathleen would like to express a huge thank you to Kristin Tev for helping to organize and lead this event. Onto Trotter Year. Trotter Year was proud to host our NEARI family orientation last Tuesday, and they were thrilled with the strong turnout. One of the highlights of the evening was the group of approximately fifteen Trotter Year student ambassadors who led guided tours prior to the presentation. Their leadership and enthusiasm helped create a welcoming and informative experience for families. Notably, the majority of attendees were first-time middle school families, making this an important opportunity to connect and build relationships early. We're excited to welcome these new parents and caregivers into the Trotter Year community. This past Friday, Trotter Year hosted its much-anticipated volleyball marathon, a longstanding tradition and a true community celebration. The event, the event was incredibly well organized by the SOS leadership team, Jacqueline Patrow, Mia Benoit, Jess Hutchins, and Pam Jelleri.
Jelleri.
Jelleri, thank you, I'm sorry. The font is rather small. Who worked tirelessly to raise funds, collect prizes, and promote the event. A huge thank you also goes out to our physical education teachers, Steve Fellow and Ben Butterfield, whose dedication to students and staff made the day an overwhelming success. They are proud to share that the volleyball marathon raised twenty thousand dollars. These funds support a wide range of initiatives at Trotter Year, including scholarships for overnight field trips, enrichment activities, assemblies, teacher professional development, community building efforts, and more. Looking ahead, they're excited to host their final school dance of the year, coming this Friday. And as always, Roger, you are cordially invited as a special guest at the dance. I'm sure that's a typo, I'm sure all of you are invited to attend the dance. That's really what Gary said. And finally, for Woodward. Sophia Creed, author and Southborough parent, visited Woodward to share her journey as a writer. She spoke candidly about both the challenges and unique strengths of being neurodivergent, offering an inspiring and empowering message to our students and staff. Her visit was a meaningful reminder of the power of embracing differences and pursuing one's passion. Students were given a sneak peek at Sophia's new book, Oh Dear, and had wonderful, and had wonderful questions following her reading. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight the Woodward Arts Night. So that was a, an event last Thursday that many people here were in attendance. It was a way to showcase students' visual art, as well as their literary arts and musical arts. We had an opportunity for students to have a mini showcase where they were, you know, demonstrating their talents, whether they be from string lessons that they're getting from Joanne Gies, or maybe they take piano lessons on the side. Maybe they wanted to read a poem or a short story that they had written, they had an opportunity to do that in the library. In the gym, we had all a pretty huge student art exhibit, where families and caregivers and students could wander the museum that we had created with background music by cellist Kyle Formato. He provided musical entertainment during the museum walk, so it was very special. We also had an ice cream social, which was probably one of the most popular things that kids had an opportunity to do. But then we also had a photo booth and interactive art installation where families and students could go in and add their mark to a piece of art that will be hung in our building. We estimated around seven hundred people who were in attendance, and the fact that, you know, formal attire was recommended certainly elevated the evening. I think it made the kids feel incredibly special and proud to share what they have accomplished in art, what talents they have outside of school, and it was just a really wonderful event, so. I think that's it. Oh, and then I just want to give a special thanks to Sophia Maroni, who's our art teacher, Lisa Wagner, who's our library media specialist, Joanne Gies, our music teacher, for embracing the mantra that I had kept putting out there, which was "Think Big" as we played in the event, because it was certainly a huge undertaking. And finally, if I could just recognize Kamali. We've had a great relationship over the years, whether it was your students or your kids in my, in my building, or just as our relationship on school committee. I appreciate your conversation and your commitment to the students of Southborough, and you definitely pushed me at times for conversations, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Pushed in a good way. Thanks.
Any comments or questions?
I was just gonna add that the orientations at both NEARI and Trotter Year, before you even gave the update tonight, just so many different families have shared with me how great they were, and again, a special shout-out to the ambassadors, I believe, at Trotter Year, that hosted and kind of led families around. So many first-time, soon-to-be middle school families were just so impressed by that. So that's kind of one thing that I wanted to share. And then also, there was a theme that ran throughout the presentation, no matter what the school, SOS, they're just like such great partners. So thank you to the SOS team, and it's just a real testament to how we keep this ship afloat, it's a partnership. So I just wanted to say a shout-out to the SOS team.
I just have one comment. I'm not sure that you said this, and maybe you didn't, I missed it, but that was your first Woodward art exhibit. To have seven hundred people come to your first run, it's something I think is incredible. And I, I appreciated how inclusive it was, because every kid had something to show off, and I think that's so important, especially in this year of belonging. And every kid could participate and convince their siblings to come, which I wasn't anticipating happening, but I did. And I, I think the excitement for the kids to go watch their peers do their performances was just awesome. So thank you to you and your team, I know they worked really hard, and they do a great job of marketing, because all the second and third graders come home and really convince you that you need to come. So they're actually our best marketing group, so.
I would say of those five, seven hundred people who attended, maybe two hundred were grandparents, aunts and uncles, cousins, so it was truly a community event, and I think it allowed all the students to, you know, show off what they're proud, most proud of, and really inclusive of larger families.
That's great.
Yeah, it was the first time that we had had an art event like this. We've had art shows in the past where it was visual art created in the art classroom, but this, we wanted to incorporate more things, more students, and really include all.
That's right. Thanks. Thanks, Roger. Alright, next is mathematics update, K to eight. Kathy Lozot and Mike. If we're not going to use chairs?
Hi, everyone. Who was last at K to five math coordinator? Thank you for having me tonight. I'm gonna start with the elementary update, and Steph will finish with the middle school. So I'm just gonna start by sharing what our elementary math vision is. This has kind of been our focus for the last couple of years, as we've been looking at a new math curriculum for our elementary. And so we really hope to make sure that we provide experiences for our students that they can understand deep mathematical thinking, and really aim for loving math, because that's not usually a lot of children's or adults' favorite subjects. Yeah, there we go, Steph loves it though. And so we really use this vision to kind of orient all the work that we're doing. We really want to make sure that we're getting kids to be critical thinkers and, you know, equip them with the knowledge that they need to go on. So this is kind of our grounding, our grounding work. So we are in phase three, the launch phase of our curriculum instruction review. So for the past couple of years, we have researched what curriculums are out there for mathematics. Last year, we piloted a few, we made our decision, and this year, we are in, we decided to do our implementation in two phases. So phase one is an early adopter phase, and then next year, we will work to fully implement, we picked Eureka Math, you can see that in the top right-hand corner, for K to five for next year. So what does phase, nope, you're good, yep, what does phase one look like? Across North Borough and South Borough Elementary, we have twenty-three classrooms who are using Eureka Math Square this year, so that represents nine classrooms in South Borough. All grades are represented K to five throughout North Borough and South Borough. In South Borough, it's just K one, three, and five that have a select group of teachers that are piloting, not piloting, but implementing. And we have at least one team per school represented across both North Borough and South Borough. And part of our decision with this was, we wanted to, knowing that teachers have just implemented a new literacy curriculum, we wanted to do a slower rollout with math, just to give a little bit more time for people to get a handle on their ELA curriculum, and but we did have a group that was really eager to start with math, and we figured that if we can implement in phase one, these phase one early adopters will help us kind of work out some of our tweaks for, for the remaining group. So it's, it's been a really positive experience for those twenty-three classrooms. And then for phase two, for our next round, which would be all K five teachers, they received a full-day launch PD through the company Great Minds, which is, who publishes Eureka Math Square. And they had a half-day PD with a group called TNTP, the New Teacher Project, and they are consultants with us that are working through our implementation plan. And then they'll receive another PD come August, which will use, it'll be in-house, so it'll be our own early adopters who will be facilitating this PD, and they'll work with their grade-level cohorts to share their experience with what they learned this year, and you know, how to help them get Eureka Math off the ground. So some of our priorities in picking a new curriculum were, we were really looking for something that was student-led and child-centered. We wanted a program that didn't rely so heavily on words, Eureka, I'm sorry, not Eureka. Envisions, that we're using now, is a high-quality instructional material. So it was still on the table when we were making a decision, it was just our time, you know, our contract was winding up, so it was like, okay, are we gonna stick with Envisions or are we gonna look for something else? One of the things that we've learned with Envisions was, it's really, it's very language-heavy, and teachers were finding that they had to do a lot of extra work to figure out, is the students, if they're struggling, are they having difficulty with the language piece, or is it the mathematical piece? So they were doing a really good job with it, but it just kind of had them go above and beyond. So we were looking for something that was less wordy. We wanted something that really made sure it went through the concrete representational abstract process for teaching math, and a couple of other things, but I love, we asked some fifth-grade students just a quick, you know, what do you think about math this year? And so what I loved about what they said was, wow, they really picked up on how the experience was really meeting our priorities. So when we were saying that we wanted something that was less wordy, you know, a student noticed, I like how simple and straightforward the questions are. Our old program was really twisty and confusing. Like, they saw that, they noticed how, you know, the language was, there was a difference in the language. Or we have students who are saying it's more hands-on, so that really speaks to the fact that we were looking for a program that really focused on that multi-sensory, like that concrete representational abstract formula. And so it's really like varieties of assessments. We have a student who said, you know, I like the exit tickets because it refreshes you on what you learned that day. So I just thought it was really interesting to hear, these were our priorities and these what we were looking for, and then students were actually feeling, you know, the benefits of that, they were experiencing that, so that was really cool. And then we are still using ST Math, which is our digital supplemental program. And so this year, our focus is really on for our teachers using data, doing deep dives into some of the data. And so professional development has focused on tools that will support students to use ST Math more independently, puzzle talks to support problem-solving, and peer mentoring. So some of our schools, like at NEARI, have been using some of their, you know, fifth graders to help with, you know, fourth graders, or even some of their fifth-grade peers. When students are getting stuck through puzzles, they have kind of like a little VIP person that they can ask to help them, so they can do some peer mentoring programs. So overall, pretty cool.
So I will pick up from where Kathy left off, and first have a few slides that you've seen before from previous updates when Kathy presented in the past. Really thinking, or probably we both presented, thinking about what are we trying to accomplish both in elementary and in middle school with that vision that Kathy started with? These are the effective math teaching practices from the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics. And these are not new, but they are things that we continue to try to elevate some of the practices in our work. And so for example, reasoning and problem-solving, mathematical discourse, productive struggle, eliciting that student thinking and having the student dialogue, those are elements of the mathematical experience. Those are elements of the mathematical experience that through Eureka Square and through Carnegie in the middle school, we're really trying to place a greater emphasis on. The circle, you know, around building procedural fluency from conceptual understanding is something that is still important. It is still a part of an effective math teaching experience and learning experience, but it's not enough to just be fluent with procedures. So this is something that kind of runs through our entire math program. And one of the things that, again Kathy spoke about this last year, was that as we make these shifts, the experience that probably all of us had in school was a more traditional format, where the teacher models, the I do part of the lesson, the teacher's up there showing them, this is how we do this procedure. And then we might do one together where our kids are giving input and getting a chance at it, and then now you do it. And the students get a chance to practice typically problems that are very similar to what was modeled for them. This traditional format, students are more passive, strong emphasis on building that procedural fluency, less of that reasoning, you know, productive struggle, discussion. So the more contemporary format that we're really working to shift to, again, K through eight, is more of the you do, we do, I do, where often we're starting with a problem and starting with productive struggle around using context and trying to understand things, and then having discussion, you know, working together to make sense of it, with the teacher then facilitating that mathematical discussion, helping for the synthesis and the naming of the conceptual understanding of the procedures and working toward that fluency. So whether it's in the elementary schools through Eureka Square, or whether it's in the middle school through Carnegie, these are sort of common threads, you know, that we're working on. In the middle school, we are in year two of Carnegie Learning or Carnegie's Blended Math Program. So that's in still the, in that final phase of implementation and monitoring. We think of this as a five-year process, like it is not sort of a, okay, we've got a new book, plug it in, here we go, and we have arrived. So as we are in year two, we are fully implementing and providing support and monitoring. And we're doing that in a number of ways. We have a coach from Carnegie who comes and works with the middle school teachers. And we actually shifted, we had one coach the first year, we had a different coach this year, who we were working to get the right match, and we have a great match, and she's been a fantastic support. She works with the teachers, sometimes observing and providing feedback, sometimes co-planning, you know, working on various facets of implementation. We also have a leadership coach, who's someone who works with the administrative team, and I often join them, and Greg has joined us. He comes, looks at data with us, we visit classrooms and debrief, and really get the opportunity to support that learning at the level of the leaders. We also have partnership meetings, which is really focused on the data and goal setting. And that's another consultant from Carnegie who helps, she makes sure we have the data, she helps us think about the data, think about how we're moving toward our goals in implementation. And we have a curriculum leader team, so we have a department head at Trotier. We then work together with Melican, with the high school, and then Kathy represents the elementary. And we meet monthly to have that K through 12 continuum. And so sometimes our conversations are focused in on the middle school, and other times they're, you know, really looking at that vertical alignment, looking at the transitions from elementary to middle to high school. So that is an important structure as we support this process as well. And just as a reminder, as we work on our implementation of Carnegie, we are focusing on both the textbook lessons, which are really where we dig into those rich math tasks with collaborative problem solving and discussion. And that ranges from analyzing peers' work. Sometimes there are actually examples that are already completed. There might be like two problems that have already been completed, and they're comparing the different approaches. Or it could be a problem that hasn't been completed and they're trying to complete it. So all sorts of different rich tasks. And then the other component, and why it's called a blended learning program, is the Mathia, which is the online adaptive software, where students are getting that individualized responsive to their work. It looks, you know, it is looking at how a student completes, what is in front of them, and then giving them the next problems, so their journeys can look different as they move through that software. So we have both of those components, and we work with the coach on both sides of that equation. And that is kind of where we are with the Carnegie implementation. But Kathy and I are both happy to answer questions and provide any other information for the update.
Anybody have questions? Go ahead.
I was, I was pretty impressed with the quotes from the fifth grade students. Were these actual quotes or these paraphrases?
These are, the ones I pulled out are actual quotes. Maybe I corrected spelling just so it was, you know, able to read it, but no, they're actual quotes, yep.
I mean, I enjoyed the whole presentation. I mean, they put that coming, was more small modules makes you feel like you're making progress. It wasn't just the way it was communicated, it was kind of the thought behind it. Is this the fifth grade? Pretty impressive, actually.
I have a question, just can you, I know that we're in Southborough, but can you help us all to understand too, that maybe fast forward to middle school? So middle school's doing Carnegie right now, right? And they're on a journey, so it's a multi-year. But we're doing it here in Southborough, Northborough is also doing that. And so these middle schoolers that will then go to potentially Algonquin, now they're at the same, they're coming from the same learning material, right? So that was part of the intention. Is the, are we doing the same for the K through five as well? Southborough to Northborough, or aiming to get there?
We are moving together at both levels. And even, I think one example of that is we've worked on both sides at looking at how we're doing placement from fifth grade to sixth grade, and then also from eighth grade to ninth grade. And we have done that together across Northborough and Southborough, so that we're using common assessments as one of our data points at each of those transition phases, so that it gives us also that horizontal alignment that's really important for us as a larger community of ten schools.
And then for, another question I have is, for the educators that maybe want more professional development or training than the few days or maybe weeks that they're formally offered, how can they do that, that's not just on their own time, you know? Or is there a means for them to do that, other than just logging in on the evening and reading a website?
Sure, so, so part of the goal is with the, with the math specialist position, is that that job embedded professional development? So as they're going, so if they're, you know, one of the biggest shifts for, when you have a curriculum like Envisions or Eureka, but because Eureka's new, there's that intellectual planning that has to take place. So you have to really go in and understand what are the purpose of every lesson component? And, you know, I have 60 minutes to do this, and I have this group of kids in front of me, what are the, where do I want to place my emphasis and whatnot? So part of our goal with the math specialist position is that teachers get that job embedded PD. So they're also having that person who can help guide that, who can model lessons, you know, so they can see what that looks like. There are, Eureka does, in addition to that, Eureka does a number of different things where they have various webinars that you can watch around different aspects of the program. We also have our district professional development day in March, that we have a number of different things that we can run in terms of, you know, for early adopters, it may be something where they've already kind of had one year under their belt. We have ideas for them to look deeper into the data that Eureka Math provides, but we may have to provide a different opportunity for our other adopters who are now just kind of only a few months into it. So we have a number of different ways that we can provide the PD on the March Day. We have the six-hour flex PD, so we have a number of things that we can offer for our teachers to do during their six-hour flex PD that's connected to the Eureka Math. Trying to think of all the other things we've brainstormed. We have the summer PD proposals that we've been thinking even for like our special educators, making sure that we're including, you know, all of our teachers that service our students. So we have some summer proposals to, you know, put forth for them, so.
And Kathy is actually, all of those things are true for the middle school as well. And so we're, you know, sort of always working on how, the opportunities we're creating, but then also how we're using the structures that exist, so department meetings, PLCs, the professional learning community meetings at the grade levels. The other thing is Kathy has been partnering with the Student Support Services Department and working on embedding some professional development in their monthly department meetings to focus in on math. So that's another area of support. So we're sort of, yeah, that will continue next year. We're trying to weave it in where we can. And there are a lot of resources for the people who want to go home at night and watch, you know, the sort of videos and things. But we try to find like every possible opportunity.
So that question was, okay, great, thank you for the educators. Now for the parents, the level of homework, do you, how did we, how did you consider that, right, in terms of choosing this platform, if you call it? And how can either parent or family say, okay, I noticed this change between this grade and that grade, or between program, last year's program and this year's program? How can they kind of communicate to, first they have their teacher, but if that is not working in terms of, what they're, they're looking for an adjustment or trying to understand why is this different than what they experienced the previous year? Like, what are the recommendations you have for them to both either, one, understand and two, like advocate for some modifications or changes?
So to start, one of the, in selecting the program for Eureka Math Square, they have two student books. Kindergarten's the exception, because they don't plan to have necessarily that homework that they suggest. They have a parent letter that would go home with each module. And then in kindergarten, it would suggest at-home activities to do for, you know, homework, which, you know, would, yeah, just would be more experiences for the students. But for grades one through five, they have a second book. They have a classwork book, and then a book that can be used for homework, which our early adopters are using it. And what it provides is a worked-through example of how the mathematics of the day was taught. And then it provides a couple of, just a small number of problems that they can practice, and then some spiral review, so other examples from work that they've done. They found that to be really helpful, because it gives parents a window into what the work is. And so they can look through that worked example to help support their child. Some of the small things we've done this year was, a couple of the schools had parent coffees, where we invited parents to come, and we could chat about the new math program, and we hope to continue to do some more of that. We definitely hope to have more parent events where we can talk about the mathematics, because there is a shift in how, most of us were probably taught very procedural, and the emphasis was really on, this is how you do math, but we really are focusing on, you know, the why behind it all. So this is how you do it, but why? What, how do these things connect? How do these methods connect? So with this program, we're hoping to offer more opportunities for parents to do that. Certainly, obviously, the first step is, if a parent had any questions, would be to contact the teacher. I've certainly attended some meetings where parents just had more questions around the, you know, why are we doing it this way? And I'm always happy to speak, you know, speak to that, I love that portion of it. So I've definitely, you know, been part of those, that communication as well. But in terms of the middle school, that might be?
That was actually the focus, one of the focus areas for our last curriculum leader meeting was thinking as we, you know, sort of, as we're wrapping up this year, what are the resources? The middle school students probably have access to more things than they let on to their parents. And so how do we need to directly educate the parents about when your child is stuck? What are the resources that you have access to from home that could support them? And/or what is the approach? Like if they were working on Mathia at home, which sometimes they might be, what is the approach? Do parents understand that there are hints built in to the program and how you might use the hints? There's actually on many of the assignment pages, a QR code at the bottom where you can get live hints. So I think we have work to do around educating parents about some of the systems and structures. And so we were just starting to talk about that at the curriculum leader meeting and doing some work on that.
Thank you, I think that would be great.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna make a quick comment. I just, just generally looking over that, how the information about how lesson, lesson structure has evolved, I of course learned in a, in a format where it was, it felt like very individualized experience going through math education. It was very much like, you either kind of get it or you don't, and it was very apparent when you sort of fell off. So just seeing this approach that really starts with students working cohesively, I feel like that not only could be helpful in so many ways, just to especially, you know, assist maybe students that are struggling and pairing them with other students that may have a better grasp of concepts. That just sounds like such a positive way to go about just learning mathematics in general. And again, just reflecting on my own experience, so that was great to see. And in addition to that, just the fact that they're reducing even more complexity with, you know, mathematics by, there was some mention of removing some of the complex language around that. So again, just maybe taking off another barrier just for some people who might be struggling. Just really great to see. And, you know, my son's in kindergarten, so he obviously is just starting to learn about math, but already has a lot of enthusiasm about it. He talks about outside of school and is really excited, and just seeing that, again, so young, is just really encouraging. So this is exciting to see as he goes through this program. There's just a lot to look forward to, and this is something to be excited about versus, you know, fearful. And back in the day, it was like, oh, math, you know? But this sounds really exciting, so I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, so recognizing that the quotes are from, are from like a fifth grade class. The eventually, right, math does trend towards more, you know, or at least this is my recollection, like more word problems. Here's, here's a, here is a problem, figure out how to apply the math concepts that you know to solve this. And so is there any, what is like the consideration for, okay, this is good for today, this is better for a fifth grader learning fifth grade concepts, but does it set them up better long-term for more, for middle school concepts, high school concepts beyond?
Absolutely, so especially, one of the things Eureka focuses on is it takes a few, it takes fewer models, and it, it's so cohesive. It builds it in such a way that, I'll use an example, the area model. So it starts off in third grade when you start learning about multiplication, and it shows students how that connects to area. And then that area model gets brought into fourth grade, same thing when they're doing multiplication with multi-digit numbers, but also potentially with, you know, decimals and fractions in fifth grade. But then how that connects to middle school is, or even high school, you can use that with algebra. It's basically the distributive property, right? So they're, they're picking really what they call high-leverage models for students. So they're, even if the, even if the program switches, right? So even if we move from Eureka Math to Carnegie, the idea is the models that they're using, they'll be overlapped, they'll see some of, you know, similar models, or they'll be able to use that to apply to higher math, because they're focusing on really high-leverage, high-leverage like strategies to use for the kids. So the idea too is, and like I always say this to, I used to say this to my own students when I taught math, but I say it to the teachers too, like, our job as math teachers is to teach kids how to think. Like, we're not teaching them simply just how to do math. We're trying to get them to think algebraically and to think in a certain way. And so part of that, I think, is, we didn't always necessarily get that opportunity. A lot of doors were closed for us when we were in that old model of like, this is how you do it, this is why you do it. Because then a lot of us, and we've asked all of our teachers in the district this question during different professional development, a lot of teachers would say, yeah, you know, there was a point at which the door closed for me, because I only knew how to do it. the door closed for me, because I only knew how to do it. And then I got to a certain point and I, I no longer understood what was happening in the classroom. We're really trying to shift that so that the emphasis is not, the end goal is not how to do it. It's, it's how to think through something when you don't know how to do it, right? And what are all those skills that take it? So it's not just, there's, part of our math curriculum is there's standards that the kids learn, but there's also these things called mathematical practices. And so we're really emphasizing in our instruction, we're really changing the shift to, instead of just being, I have these standards to teach, and this is what I teach, and this is how I teach it, there's this shift to how do mathematicians think in the real world? And how do we change our instruction to help mirror that? So they need to be communicators. You know, we still emphasize precision and correct answers, but that's only one of the many pieces. Do kids know how to use tools? And then part of that is do they know how to select the correct tool to use, or the best tool to use for certain situations? Can they construct viable arguments? So do they understand how to, you know, justify their reasoning with something? So the program is shifting to also emphasize those standards of math practice. That's going to have a longer gain for, you know, for our students.
And I'll just add, I think, Alan, if I understood some of what you're getting at, it was some of the comments about like the language, not being as language heavy and...
Gotcha.
And I think sometimes we would hear from teachers from Envisions, although it was a high-quality resource, that it, it felt a little convoluted at times. Like kids were getting kind of lost. And I think Eureka is not stripping it down to numbers, but it feels more straightforward in a way that kids are finding more accessible, if that makes sense. I will say that as we move into the middle school, there is quite a bit of language in the Carnegie program. And I think to your point, there, there needs to be, and that's some of the, you can't do some of those practices without embedding it in the context. So they are building that skill of being able to sort of find the mathematics within the context. And we do have to work at it, at how do we unpack the words and see the math in the words. And we also, with Mathia, kids can have it read to them. And it also, so for some kids, if the words are a barrier, they can do text-to-speech. I see kids with their headphones on. It's also fully translatable. So for kids who might not be there yet to do that work in English, the entire platform translates to anything that Google Translate can do. So, so the, the language comes into it. It's, it just, that student's words are really good. It's just not as twisty as it was.
Yeah. That was a, and I apologize because I missed maybe understood, but where you're going with that. The other, what was appealing to Eureka was, again, it's, they didn't take away the context, because by, you can't strip away the context of them out, right? You still want that there. But they made their, they have their student books written at the student's average grade, grade level. So a first grader should be able to read the directions on that page. That was not the case with our other program. Our teachers did an extraordinary job making it work. You know, it, it, they might be that they were reading certain things out to the students and they did exceptional at it, or they would work in small groups. So they had that ability to make sure students were understanding what was going on. They just, this, this takes a different approach. They, you know, they use pictures sometimes in order to, so as students are learning to read, they are still able to access their student materials with the mathematics program. So that was a barrier that was, you know, just, again, our teachers did an exceptional job with it. It was just, it was just something that they had to always contend with, whereas this gives us a little bit. But the word problems and everything's there. They're just more, I wouldn't even say straightforward. It just, they're less convoluted. Yeah, they're just clear. Yeah.
I just have a few comments and questions. So I'm one of the early adopters for first grade, so I've been getting to see the homework. And I, I agree. I think it is, and I'm too older once who went through Envisions. So, and we didn't have homework in first grade, but I, I do think there's a great value as a parent to be able to see what's going on in class and what the new math is, right? And being able to, I mean, the examples are so clear in the, in the packet that comes home. It, it's really, it's great. And to see that my daughter can do it on her own, and, you know, with the, with what she's been able to do decipher for reading and just looking at the picture. So I, I completely agree with you. In terms of the early adopter educators, what's the feedback that you've gotten from them on how it's going?
Overall, great. People are definitely excited about the program. You know, there's all, it's the bumps. They're the first, the first-year bumps are typically around pacing, right? You're learning this new program and how do we make sure we're, you know, keeping it on pace? That's probably the biggest, the, that's probably the biggest, you know, setback is, is just kind of like making sure that they're keeping on pace, because it takes, it takes a while when you're starting something new to get a flow of what the lesson is. But overall, the, I think two big things stand out. One is they feel that their students have a deeper number sense. So they, you know, it's not, number sense meaning not just that they know their facts. It's deeper than that, that they understand the connections and the relationships between the numbers, that they have more than one way to, to go about solving something. And then the second would be, I think that, so Eureka sometimes shows things in a little different way. Like, we, we all know what we call the standard algorithm, which is like, we all know how to like just line up the numbers and multiply it. Eureka does a little shift in their notation. It's the same process, but they just shift where they're writing the numbers. And the teachers are like, it makes so much more sense. The students understand this so much more. So the shift actually comes, it's a little bit harder for the adults, right? Like, we're like, wait, we're so used to doing it this way. We know how to do it this way. So there's that little bump of like, oh, you really have to make sure before you go into these lessons that you're like, I, I, let's just make sure I, I've got a handle on this math. But they're seeing great, they're great feedback, like when the kids are doing, wow, kids, kids are understanding this math to a greater depth. And just their biggest message is like, we got to just trust the process. Like, it, it feels uncomfortable a little bit, but trust the process because they, they, they feel that the kids are doing excellent with it, which is awesome to hear, especially in a, in a first year.
That's great. In terms of the MCAS and how the MCAS are constructed. Now, I haven't, I don't get access to like the question, which I do have researched that. Are those questions more twisty than?
I actually don't think so. No, I actually think the MCAS is more straightforward than our Envisions program is, to be honest with you. Yeah.
Okay. So are you anticipating seeing a change either way of MCAS results for math?
I mean, I think, so I, I think your initial thing is sometimes when you implement something new, it takes time for that change to occur, to see a difference. We were just kind of looking at data when we, so we are giving, for the placement test for fifth to sixth grade, we are actually giving, using Carnegie as our task this year, because we have teams that, we have some teachers that are doing Eureka and some that are doing Envision. So we used Carnegie instead. And what we noticed when we looked at that data just pretty quickly, it was like, oh, this is, no, it's like they're both high-quality instructional materials. We still, you can't tell the difference. Yeah, like both, the, the kids are doing well on, you know, with it. So I would anticipate with MCAS for us to see a change. It would be a little while, I would anticipate. One of the, one of the things that when we have looked at our MCAS data over, like some trends in our data, was, you know, measurement. And that, that one particular strand was always one that we struggled with, like how our kids are always a little bit lower than we would hope them to be on this measurement. And one of the things that changes with Eureka is they embed, instead of having a separate measurement unit, they embed measurement in throughout. So that was like one of our reasons we were like, hmm, we have, you know, looking at our data, our trend is showing this. Do any of these programs, like, you know, make a shift in that? So that was one, another kind of reason why we looked toward this. So I would hope over the course of time that maybe we would start to see some, yeah.
And you can see in the MCAS results that those questions are related to measurement, so you should be able to track that in isolation. Great. And then my last question's around ST math. I think I should go first. So at each grade level, do you have benchmarks that students are supposed to hit in terms of puzzle count or level or, can you explain how that works?
Yeah, sure. So our goal, just in general, is that every school, in every classroom, and every student aims for completing 80% of their journey. What a student's journey is, is individualized. So the journey might be, we aim to keep all of our kids on grade level journey. And so, but there are times where teachers will be able to assign different puzzles. So they, that, that could be for a number of different reasons. It could be for an intervention where they want, you know, students to look at something that they may have been struggling with. It could be for fluency practice, because we have different ones. It could be they're preparing for a unit that's coming up. And so they might, it might be out of order, and they may say, you know what, I want to preview this unit by doing a little bit on ST math. So regardless of, so the journey may be made up of not just grade-level puzzles, but it could have some other assignments in there as well. But our goal is 80% for that. And we've really looked this year at students who were under 40% and kind of just looking at what were some barriers to their access to ST math, and just kind of taking some action plans with that. So that could have included things like if a student was, you know, having a different service at that ST math time. So it was like, okay, what are some other ways we could get them that time? Where else can we build at it? Is it something that they could do at home if we felt, you know, that the parent would be willing to, you know, provide some more time or something like that to get extra? So, so we have been looking at it. So 80% of their journey is kind of what our aim is. Teachers do a number of different incentives with that. So they might break it down and say, ah, we want you to get 60 puzzles done this week, you know? So they, they use a number of different ways to incentivize the students. And I know, oh, oh, Steve is there. I was going to say, did you guys do March Mathness? And, yeah, I know Neri did it too. And so they, they'll do some school-wide, you know, competitions to kind of keep them going. But, yeah, but yeah, they're, they are looking at different data points there.
Yeah, we just had that, so our math champion Heidi McLean has kind of piloted the monthly challenges that we have. We also had Camp Gigi run last month, and that was a before-school and during lunch additional ST math time. It was supervised by staff members, but also we had student mentors. So grade three students would come and they would, these are students who have, who are on track for meeting their, you know, puzzle progress goal by the end of the year, or have already exceeded that goal. So they would come and just gently coach students, not solving puzzles for them, but just trying to encourage them or asking them questions that would, you know, have students think about, think through different ways that they could solve the puzzles. So again, it's identifying those kids who might not have had the same access, or maybe they're receiving several different services during some of that time during the math block for maybe some of our Yale students or special education students, students who are receiving remedial reading services. We just wanted to give them more time to have access to ST math.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I could talk all night about math. Guys would probably be like, okay, move it on, move it on. Let's go. I'll just say, as Kathy, as Greg's going back and Kathy's leaving, just a huge thank you to Kathy for her leadership in this area and to the teachers. It's, it is a lot of work. And on the backs of wit and wisdom, now taking on Eureka's word has been a big undertaking, and people have done it with great commitment and grace. And it's been great. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Steve, you can leave whatever you feel like you want to. All right. Legislative update.
So just a couple of brief updates. First, you are all aware that Governor Healy did sign H62 to extend remote meetings through June 2027, so for another two years. So it provides public bodies the ability to have remote meetings if necessary. And then secondly, we are monitoring the FY26 governor's budget. It is moving through the process. There's a lot of legislative advocacy happening around the budget, specifically around circuit regular reimbursement, which is specification funding, also making sure that regional transportation, which indirectly impacts South World, and also making sure that districts that are considered foundational level districts, where they, they've met the criteria, only receive a certain amount of increase through Chapter 71, that minimum locally districts receive more money, with thinking that it's costing more and more for districts to educate and provide an education services. So that's what we're watching. That's what we're advocating for. And any updates, we'll keep the community posted.
Thank you. Any questions? Update on action plan progress.
Sure. So this is the fourth update that I provided on the action plan that we began the school year with. I think we've made a lot of progress and done a lot of good work as a result of this plan. So I think one of the goals was really to review investigation procedures, look at district-based information, how we conduct formal and informal investigations, making sure there's a clear understanding and expectation of our district leaders, and also making sure that there's a systematic approach. So as you know, we did provide substantial training over the past many months to our leadership team focused on formal and informal investigation procedures. Heather Richards is instrumental in that work. We also work closely with our legal counsel to do that training. I think it's been successful, and we are seeing consistency in practice. We also are conducting discipline data in a more systematic fashion. So we are using Power School. And we have met with principals and looked at that data, look for patterns and trends, to see if there are changes we need to, to implement in terms of what our students are experiencing. And we'll continue that work, looking at the data, documenting infractions, and then thinking about what are the actions that we need to implement as, as a district. We'll also continue to do training. It's something that we'll, we'll have an ongoing process for each year, something that we'll have a routine cadence around that. Also, just like to report out on our Director of Belonging and Community Engagement. So we, we were successful in hiring that, that position. Maggie Ibrahim has began the role in September. She has spent a lot of time building relationships with our faculty staff, with our leadership team, and with the community. Her work has centered around having regularly scheduled meetings with principals to talk about teaching and learning, opportunities of learning for students, educating us and helping us grow in terms of thinking about making sure that all students have the opportunity that they need. She's spent a lot of time working with teacher teams, attending faculty meetings, working with our community coalition, working very closely with Selvi, our Director of Multilingual Learners, and also networking outside of our organization and our community with other districts in terms of the work of opportunity for all students. That work will continue as we move toward the end of the year, but it's been a great success story. And she's been a, a positive addition to our leadership team. And also, one of the goals was to, again, collect discipline data. I think I mentioned that earlier. We are doing some more training on, on the discipline module. We have, now that we have data, we're also going to be calibrating how, what data to enter and how we enter that data. So that's ongoing work. And we also set a goal for the school year to kind of reauthorize our partnership with Sandy Hook, so that it was a anonymous reporting tool that we use in grade six through 12. So Sandy Hook updated a lot of its materials and actually has a new platform. So we spent a lot of time, grade six through 12, implementing the new training materials and making sure our students understand how they can report something that they are concerned about. And one of the goals was to bring Sandy Hook anonymous reporting to, to fourth and fifth grade. What we decided was, moving into fifth grade, what I did not realize at the start of the school year is that this is the first year that Sandy Hook offered it to elementary students. So we thought we would start slow and just implement in the fifth grade. So this past January, that is work that we did, working with our educators, working with our students, and working with our parents on this particular tool. And more importantly, you know, how, if you receive information that is concerning, what do you do with it? And what are the options? Tell a trusted adult, tell a parent, use this supporting, this reporting tool. Tell a trusted adult, tell a parent, use this reporting, this reporting tool. It's not widely used in fifth grade. We haven't received any tips as a result. But again, the thinking was that as students transition from fifth to sixth grade, it won't be the first time they're hearing about it when they're introduced to it again in the fifth grade. So that's been a success. And we'll continue to advertise and communicate to students that this is available through the remainder of the year. We also have worked closely on thinking about the equity audit that we completed in twenty-two, thinking about the goals that were set forth in terms of making sure that all students had learning opportunities. And we remove barriers to those learning opportunities. So we've worked closely this year, working with Mass Insight to really think about where have we met the goals and where are our barriers. Right now, we are in the process of launching a survey to families and it's really around understanding parents' experiences in our district around collaboration, communication, and any information that they think would be helpful for us to know as we think about the next level of work in terms of opportunities for all kids. We will be also surveying students, so that will take place after April break. And we'll be surveying students sixth through grade eight in South Row and at the high schools as well. And that data will be compiled and a report will be generated. The leadership team will take that report and really think about what is our FY twenty-five, twenty-six action plan, and we'll lead those, those goals into the action plan. The other significant work that we did this year was around professional learning. So we did have the Wellness Days, which was an early release opportunity for educators. So we set out a plan, a systematic plan to work with all educators pre-K through twelve and really thinking about the theme of belonging. So we launched the school year with that theme. We had our professional partners conduct that, that work. And then we had systematic approaches to professional learning for each of the faculty and staff to engage in the theme and do some systematic learning. Trotiere, as I shared in the last report, completed the last of the training and we continue with the theme belonging. I think, thinking about next year, some of the conversations we're having is, do we have a new theme or do we continue with the theme? So that is something that we're, we're having conversations around. And then lastly, part of the work with the school committee was to examine many of its policies, so non-discrimination, Title IX, the bullying. So the joint policy subcommittee has spent the last several months looking at the policies, working closely with legal counsel, looking at the recommendations from CIC, and making sure our policies are solid, are clear, and incorporate CIC's recommendations. So the policies are in first reads, so those were brought to the combined meeting in March. They are on the website for public comments. I've been wanting to get public comment around the policies if that's available. And the goal is to take any feedback, meet with the joint policy subcommittee in early May with a preparation of having the second reading of policies at the combined meeting in June. And I think that I'm sure I missed a lot.
No.
But I think that in terms of the, you know, the plan and setting, setting out goals and implementing the plan, I think it's one thing to implement, but also to think about what impact has it had in terms of what our teachers know and are able to do and also what our students experience. And I think that, you know, I think there's a lot to be proud of in terms of having a plan, moving forward with a plan, having teachers join the work and be willing to do the work. So I think as of April ninth, we're in a good place and more work will continue within the month ahead.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah. All right, so I've made some notes because I was trying to, wondering if I should ask as you were going, but first of all, I'm really glad we had the action plan. As part of when we said we would establish one and you've been doing a diligent job keeping up with that. For the topic of the human resources, it's reviewing the twenty twenty-four Title IX investigation manual prepared by the, I think that this, you covered this later on when you talked about the policies that have been brought for first read and I'm on that policy committee. But I was just gonna say that, that then, you know, I guess the next update should probably will say whether or not a new policy has been approved or not, right? Because we had, there were some changes in the Title IX considerations. Okay, so we can, that, that one's not really a question, it's more of a reminder. And then on the page where you talk about the next audit of discipline data scheduled for June with a goal of identifying patterns and trends. If I recall right, and maybe this is for you, Chelsea, like, I think one of the reasons that we wanted something like this done was so that you could say year over year, like, okay, well, are we seeing things increase, stay the same? Are you seeing that there are a higher volume in one, at one level, one grade level versus another? You know, the administrative team is able to make those, to kind of look at that, but so is, you know, you as the school committee chair also maybe come up with a way where just, you don't need it quarterly, but like, beginning of the year, end of the year, like, where do we stand?
Where do we stand?
So I think that should, could be something that either the joint committee figure out a way to have that conversation or just individually South Row versus North Row. And I don't know if you already had a pre-plan of what to do there, Greg, but I think it'd be helpful in kind of bookending, you know, you had a plan, you know, you know what things, we didn't have information, we weren't tracking information previously. Now we started to and...
Started to use it.
Yes. Um...
Good question. So when you say the joint committee, are you talking about the combined or are you talking about...
The combined, the combined.
Okay.
And then another question on the, for the Director of Community Engagement, Maggie that joined us, she did an intro in the beginning of the year. I wonder if, is I can, in your end of year summary, could you share, if she's interested in doing it or you are interested in doing it, saying, these are some of my findings or things that we've implemented, changed, improved, stayed the same? I think that would be very good because it was a role that we fought, you know, like, really moved swiftly to bring about and we'd want to see like what, any improvements or what, what actions have been taken since.
Yep.
And I know it's a, it's a long game kind of position.
Right.
So you know, you're not gonna see like, but it'd be nice for us to say like, we had the start and here's where we are today. And then the last question I had, Greg, is how do, how does the public give comments on the policies? Just emailing us or there's a hyperlink?
So on the district main page, there should be a link around policies first reads.
Yeah.
There should be a form that people can fill out and provide any feedback. I'll have to triple check. I know it's available either on the school committee site of the webpage or on the main page. I think it's on the main page, but before the end of the meeting, we can clarify that.
Okay. Does it go to you?
It goes to Cheryl and Nancy.
Okay.
And then, and then to me.
I had a comment about policies, two comments. One, a reminder for the committee that if you have any comments related to the policies, especially as they relate to the feedback from CIC that we get them to Greg by May first, so that we can have that feedback in prior to the subcommittee meeting. And then the second is, I guess, more of a question specifically related to the policies that CIC called out in their report to us and a recommendation from them about making sure that everybody in the district receives those policies and make sure that they're aware of them. And I guess I can only remember the animal policy going out. I don't know if we regularly send them out, but I want to make sure whatever we do send out is like, like, like red flagged and like this is newly revised, make sure you understand what's in these policies. I think especially for families who maybe aren't reading every single word of all the communications that you send out. Not that, I mean, I'm sure everybody reads them, but, but just, I just think that it's really important, like, the district has put a lot of effort into a lot of these things. And I think the school committee's commitment to doing the CIC report was extremely important and it continues to be important and just making sure that, that the recommendation is highlighted in the distribution of those revised policies. I just want to make sure they work.
We definitely could do that. I will also comment that I know early on in the year, there was conversations around accountability of professional learning. So we are implementing a new tool this fall around the trainings that all educators are required to take. Currently, it's a PowerPoint presentation that educators need to move through for all employees. So we, we are in the process of setting up a, a training module that is videos, it's more in-depth and it has kind of an assessment of people's understanding so that it now will be implemented as we launch the school year, which will give us, I think, an opportunity to highlight some of the changes that were implemented as a result with BAC being staff. And I think for the community, I think calling it out separately in a separate communication would be important before the end of the school year.
And I'll just share that in terms of public feedback on the policies, on the homepage of the website and quick links, there's School Committee Policy Development link. If you click on that, it goes to the policies in a form that people can respond to.
Yeah, we, we just took a look at also, when, I'm trying to think about when, so the next meeting that will review policies is in June.
Yeah.
So school will just maybe have a few more weeks, like, one or two.
Nine weeks.
Yeah. All right. One of the, just for the example you brought up about the pets and walking them off. I was gonna ask Keith, like, that would be one that I would want the SEDP program to know about, but both for the last week, you know, a couple of weeks of school, what, then next year, and then also like the summer season as well, just to be mindful because then it gives them a tool or policy that they can refer to and it's not just like, I'm not telling you that you shouldn't do this. Please refer to such and such. That's, I don't know what other programs we have, well, actually there are a couple other afternoon programs, but whichever ones you can think of, those might be the groups that you should give that to as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And you know who the typical areas that you get these challenging situations from anyway, so just give, now provide them with the tool that they can use.
Back to your training. Is there any opportunity for school committee members to have access to the training?
Yeah, they'll be taking the tests as well.
Okay. I agree. I just, I'll joke, be aside though, I think there is value in us knowing what the content is because then it gives us an opportunity when we're asked questions to say, yeah, no, that's covered or a great idea, maybe we, you know, just, just another resource for families to have.
I think it'd be great to have the school committee every year be part of the mandatory trainings.
Yeah.
I agree. I think it's just good information so we could definitely...
Okay. Other questions on the action plan? Sorry, I just gave a really more work to you. Thank you, Greg, for the update. Approval of grants donations.
So we have a couple of, actually one grant for donation from our SLS and PTOs for NSBR reads. So I know many of you attended NSBR reads, it was a very successful event and the library and partnered with our support organizations and they graciously donated their time and funding to support that event. So we just wanted to acknowledge those donations.
Yes, thank you very much. That was a great event. So I'll move that we approve the monetary donations, the amount of thirteen hundred dollars in in-kind donations for NSBR reads.
Second?
Any discussions? All right, thank you. All right. Recap of annual town meetings. Do you want me to do this?
Sure.
Okay. So Monday evening, we had a annual town meeting with the auditorium in this building and our budget was passed as presented at the three point five two percent, I forget what the dollar figure was, but so thank you to the town, the residents of South Row for supporting the school budget for the next school year. In addition to that, the Trotiere group feasibility study article was also passed for a hundred thousand dollars. And if you remember, there were expecting an MSBA reimbursement portion to that, which would presumably lower the hundred thousand dollars, but that is the max that that project will cost. And so Keith, I think, has his marching orders to go ahead with that project.
Appreciate the support.
So, yes, so we support not having, you know, not delaying this, this project. I think this was good time, not good timing, but appropriate timing for engaging in that one. Did Miss Ed have your time?
No, I just want to also thank the citizens for approving the budget and just thank the school committee for helping us navigate the process. It was a little bit challenging with some late information. I think that overall we have a really solid budget that will continue to support our educators and our students. So a lot of work ahead of us.
Any other readings? Algonquin competency determination.
Sure. So just a quick update. So in twenty twenty-four, voters approved vow question two, what was elimination of MCAS as a high school graduation requirement? Many people thought it was eliminate, elimination of MCAS for every grade, it was just eliminated as a high school graduation requirement. So students had to pass in tenth grade English and mathematics MCAS for competency determination. Since that was removed, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asked cities and towns to develop their own competency determination in the place of the MCAS graduation requirement. So two separate things are at play. We have our graduation requirements, so the number of credits a student needs to, to earn in order to graduate the courses that they need to progress through for graduation. And now we also have set our own competency determination, which, which basically replaces the MCAS requirement that existed in prior years. So the high school has set the following as competency determination. They need to achieve a passing grade in ninth and tenth grade English, achieve a passing grade in geometry in either Algebra I or Algebra II, and achieve a passing grade in one of the three core science classes, biology, chemistry, or physics. So those competency determinations align with the former competency, MCAS competency determination. We didn't have any students who failed to meet the MCAS competency determination. And we didn't have any students who failed to meet the MCAS competency determination. They did ask, it's a little better to look at the data. So we think our most rigorous standards are the graduation requirements, although the competency determination requirements are there. It's really a fairly low bar. You can't really graduate from Algonquin without those. So those are, in effect, the regional school committee did vote those and will continue to monitor. I don't think this is the last conversation that the Algonquin team will have around this. The state is looking at a statewide competency determination in place of MCAS. So I think this will change in the next six months to a year.
No questions?
Did I miss anything?
Go ahead.
I need my, my trusted colleague to show any blanks.
So as I understand it, when, so MCAS was, was removed as a requirement that the state placed on districts to place on students, if you will, to, to graduate and allow the districts to have their own competency requirements. Could a district essentially go back and say, you know what, we like this as a competency requirement and say, so in our district, we're going to use MCAS as that requirement? Is there any prohibition on doing that? I'm not suggesting, should or not, it's sort of out of our purview here at the K grade level, but just curious whether there's a restriction against it.
So districts could, districts could choose to use MCAS as a competency determination, not recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There are no retests. So if a student failed to keep the appropriate score on math, DLA, or science, there would not be retests that that student then could take. So they were recommending against it.
Okay. Thank you.
On to all business. Neri Building Committee update. And we have a couple of bullets under here. So I think we'll take the first bullet and I'll just, for the public, we did have a joint meeting with Select Board Advisory, Neri Building Committee, and KDA's committee last Thursday evening for several hours. So I think that is the most up-to-date information that the committee has. And with that, we're going to first talk about fifth grade at Tradior Middle School. And we've received several inquiries at public forums and from residents in town who want to explore fifth grade at Tradior. So Greg and team are going to give some feedback on that and a recommendation. It does lie within the school committee to vote to make any grade configuration changes. So I thought it would be prudent of us to take a position on this prior to taking a position on the Neri Building project. And just so you know, Advisory voted four to one last Thursday evening to support the Neri Building project. Select Board voted four to one Monday evening to support the Neri Building project. And then we've been also asked, and I think they're printing a word for this within the next week or so. So, so that's kind of where we're at with the Neri Building. So I'll hand it over to Greg and team for the fifth grade discussion.
Sure. So I think it's important to begin with what is the option that we presented to voters on May 10th. So a lot of work has gone into really thinking about what is, what are the educational outcomes? What's the vision? What are we trying to accomplish? And the Neri Building Committee, the leadership team, working in partnership with the school committee and educators have put forth its best thinking that having a model of a pre-K one and then a two through five elementary school is the option that we'll be presenting to the townspeople for. We have spent a lot of time talking about why. We talked about reducing transitions. We talked about being able to design spaces with integrity, continuing the great work of our music, our PE, our art, the work of classrooms, and what work our teachers do. So I think that it's really important to first focus on the benefits of a two through five, and then I can talk about the fifth grade question. So I thought we would spend a little time talking about the highlights of the new design. I'm not sure if everyone has had a chance to walk through the design, but I thought we'd spend a few minutes by doing that. So again, what will be for the town voters is a new two through five elementary school that we located on the current Neri site, approximately in the same exact location. Can we think of that next slide? There are many highlights of this model. One of the highlights is that we're able to design a school with safety and security at the forefront of a new facility. The current, the current facility was designed in the 1960s and the world has changed. Security standards have changed, fire codes have changed, building codes have changed. And the current Neri building does not meet today's standards in terms of safety, security, fire code, electrical, et cetera. Having a new design school, raised two to five, has allowed us to work in partnership with our public safety officials to really think about designing for safety, thinking about what types of systems we want in the building for unified communications, unified security, and also to think about how traffic flows the building to build a sense of community. So another feature that the new, the proposed design accomplishes is those safety features in addition to traffic safety. So if anyone has experienced parent pickup or drop-off, beginning and end of the day, it's, it's, it's not safe, according to the next slide please. So one example of a safety enhancement is separating the bus traffic from the parent drop-off so that you don't have students crossing traffic to walk to a car, which currently creates an unsafe environment for, for students. So we think that this new design school really puts at the center, safety and security and development of the community for our students, faculty, and staff.
And so another part of the plan that we wanted to highlight has to do with the model of having a four-grade school. One of the things we've talked about a lot is the tremendous amount of time that goes into transitions at this time, where we have three two-grade schools at the elementary level. And so students are entering schools and then we are starting the work of transitioning them to the next schools. And so both families, students, and educators are investing a tremendous amount of time. It starts months before the transition happens and then continues after. So this would allow us to have greater continuity in the experiences of students, both socially and emotionally and academically, to be able to really have that seamless monitoring of their progress without this same effort. There's, there's always effort as we move from grade to grade, but when you're working across buildings, it's a really different logistical and time commitment. This also allows for greater vertical alignment of curriculum, of the collaboration and professional development among faculty and staff, alignment of how we support the social emotional learning with behavioral expectations and approaches to all of that work. It also provides for opportunities for peer mentoring. We heard tonight about third graders working with second graders and you can imagine if you had fifth graders and second graders where those opportunities, the teachers would definitely capitalize on.
And I can give one specific example. In Northborough, we have the pre-K through five continuum. Schools are organized into families. So every faculty and staff member from custodians to food services, they each have a family and that family is made up of pre-K through five students and they keep that family for the period that students are at the school. So again, it's just one example of how we can create a sense of community in a model where there's a greater experience.
In addition, that this model would consolidate the communication to families, from school to families. Many of you are managing schedules and communication across multiple schools. So this would simplify those aspects and it provides greater opportunities around teacher mentoring. It is, we always provide any teacher that is new to the district with a mentor. It's very challenging when it's across schools and we actually try to avoid that, but that limits our pool of, particularly for teachers who are specialists, it limits the pool of people that we can use as mentors or it compromises that mentoring relationship. So that's something that would be a benefit as well. So we thought it might be helpful to just do a quick walkthrough to make sure everyone's oriented to the plans. This is the first floor and the bottom of the screen is the front of the building. So this, if you picture this on the site of the current Neri building, you have really your common spaces at the front, so the gymnasium to the left, moving to the nurses' suite, the main office, and then going across to the other side of the front door, you have your music area and the cafeteria. And then the two branches going up are the wings, which we've been referring to as the learning neighborhoods. Those are the academic wings and where we would be organized by grade level, which we'll talk a little bit more about. And then on the second floor, similar setup, the front of the building, we have art and the library media center. And then the gray zone is our sort of mechanical utilities, kind of not for students. And then again, two learning neighborhoods for grade levels that are stacked above the other two learning neighborhoods. So that just kind of orients you to the overall picture and then we'll dive a little bit deeper on some of the features within this. So the idea of the learning neighborhoods is that by bringing four grades together, you do end up with more students in the same community, which offers lots of opportunities that we just talked about, but we want students to have that sense of a smaller community within the community. And so in this design, students are organized by learning neighborhood so that they have that sense of cohesion within their grade level and they don't have to travel far for, you know, the various things that they're doing in that academic experience. The, there, we're, you know, then designing for flexibility within that. So there's, in each learning neighborhood, one of the classroom, that's actually represents eight classrooms there, sort of looks like four, but it's actually eight. And one of them has a retractable wall so that you could actually open that up. And there is sufficient space within the learning neighborhoods where that learning commons, which is that space that one would think of as the hallway, but is really an enhanced space in this design. It's much wider than a typical hallway with furniture and technology. And that would be a space where you could gather as a grade level and where, whether it's by retracting the wall, you might bring some classes together, or it might be in the learning commons so that we can have that community and that sense of belonging within the grade level.
Something? Got a question?
Yeah, right.
In this new model, do we move away? What do people do with lockers? Is that a thing or not a thing? Is it, do they look different than 1989 versus 2000?
Had a lot of conversations.
Lot of conversation. You can't actually.
They don't use them, you have them, but they don't use them, they eat up space.
Yeah. So it's, you can't actually see it in this particular rendering. We have another one where you can. But the, there would be cubbies, not sort of the closed-door lockers, but cubbies in the learning common space to maximize the classroom space, but to have a place where students could store their things. And above those would be sort of teacher storage, story, you, you can imagine the conversations about storage. Storage is important. And so it's, it's always about maximizing storage for the adults, but then also having organized spaces for the kids. So there was a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah. And just because we live in, you know, northeast and even if they never put their book bags down, the coats and the boots and all of those things.
Snow bags.
We even talked about open bottom, closed bottom, what's the easiest ways to clean because then you have the boots and, and there's a lot, you know, if we move forward with this process, there's still a lot of those details that will continue to be discussed and that would, you know, be, there is already a plan, but then it would continue to dig into those details. So within the learning neighborhoods, or actually beyond the learning neighborhoods, as we thought about the whole building, the theme of ensuring accessibility and inclusivity was a really strong theme throughout our discussions and our planning. The idea of, you know, current, our current building does not meet ADA, current ADA compliance standards, but that is really the ceiling, right? Like, meeting the standards was a minimum requirement as we designed. What we were really aiming for was much beyond that, to offer an environment that is creating that inclusive community, removing barriers to access through flexible, thoughtful spaces where students can engage with the learning in a variety of different ways. So in the thinking about these neighborhoods, I have to remember how I set this up, you have within the neighborhoods, if you look at the pink, we were making sure that students are getting the support services that they need as close to their classroom as possible. So we're having small group learning rooms, which are those small pink squares within every learning neighborhood where students might be breaking out into small groups. It might be that they're getting, they're working with a speech and language pathologist. There's also special education classrooms embedded in the learning neighborhoods, which are those larger pink classrooms. And those are for some of our special, specially designed programs. We actually have included additional space beyond what we currently have in grades two through four, which would allow us to keep more students in district than we currently do at these grade levels. Again, those are embedded within the neighborhoods so that we are having that inclusive and accessible experience. The larger pink area down by the gymnasium is for adaptive physical education, OT and PT. And it's really a space with integrity to meet the needs of our learners and to have those adjacencies for collaboration. Right now, it's sort of here, there, and everywhere that these things are happening, but they're certainly not, you know, together and next to the gym for that greater inclusivity. There's also a special education conference room for designated space for meetings with parents and meetings for the teams so that where we're often, we might be too big of a group for a conference room, so we're looking for an empty classroom, this would be a designated space for that work. The other, let's see if I go to the next slide.
So where are the, the small pink rooms that are kind of between the classrooms? Are that, and look like they're connected to both classrooms, what are those?
Those are the small group rooms that can be used in a variety of ways. They could be for, for services, for, it might be a small group that's being led by an adult, but they also, you are correct, they can be accessed from the classrooms or from the hallway. So they also can be a space where a teacher is running a lesson, kids are at work, and there might be a group of students or a student that needs a quieter space. And that could be a space that could be used. So they can have multiple uses to, again, provide that accessibility for the many ways that kids might access the learning.
So if you think about the classroom space, the small group space, and then a learning common, it's a more flexible use of space. So you could have learning happening in the classroom and small group and flowing out into the learning. So it just provides a more. So it just provides more opportunities for the way learning takes place today. It's typically not in whole group lecturing. It's usually some type of introduction and then students break out and focus on, on the learning.
And can I answer that as well, Stephen? Um, what you'll see too is that, um, starting as early as Finn and then going up, um, I, I mean, I've noticed this yet, but, cause I have kids in all of the schools. Um, sometimes the students that need those special services, um, they're just outside in a way. And, um, it's very, everyone is very kind and like, you know, you just kind of move through the motions and, but like imagine you're trying to like do your like one-on-one with your aide and like people are walking past you and you're like, oh, I want to see this, I want to hear that, or there goes my friend, I want to, it's very distracting and not very supportive. I think that's what that space kind of helps to resolve. And all these terms about belonging and, you know, feeling, um, included, like this, that's what that, you don't feel like you're outside in the hall, you know, you know, like you're different. It's just that, um, I'm, I'm part of the class still, but I'm getting this additional help. Or maybe you don't even, you're not on a IP or any special services, but there's just a moment in time during the class where you just kind of need that one-off space. It could be used for that. But yeah, sometimes when they're little, because you guys have very small ones, they don't really mention it or notice it. But as the years go by, they're like, yeah, so-and-so has to sit over there.
Yep.
So.
Where they currently, what currently exists is the rooms that we're using for small group construction are not located. They're across the building.
You gotta walk all the way?
That they're separate. The spaces were not designed necessarily for that intention. So this tries to make the spaces seamless. And the goal is to have educators not think about space. They don't have to worry about where kids will go, if they want to be small group, it's just happening. And space becomes not anything that a teacher really needs to think about, because it's designed for the purpose.
And I'll just point out at this bottom part, these, this is an example of these are the types of spaces in pink at the bottom that are potentially the school psychologist's office or, um, a behavior specialist's office. And we, as we've worked with the design team, with special educators on the team, with principals on the team, being really thoughtful about having some upstairs and some downstairs. And again, not keeping it close to the learning neighborhoods, but then having the integrity of the space so that when a student is being assessed, it's in the privacy of that space where they're, it's quiet and they're able to concentrate. Um, but when they want to have a small group, there's enough space in there to bring a small group in or to go to a small group room. So the options. Um, let's see. The other piece I wanted to just point out here was in the photographs, if you look at the lower photograph, this is a rendering of the learning commons. And so as we thought about these spaces, we were not only trying to make them inclusive and accessible, but for them to be flexible and adaptable. And so in some cases, that meant, you know, having that all different ways that kids can learn. So the learning commons would include flexible furniture and technology so that if, for some kids, working out in that learning commons will work well, right? And so a small group of kids might be out in the learning commons and then there would be appropriate furniture for that. And it's a much wider space than our, our current hallways. In addition, you can see in the sort of back corner, there's like a, it looks like a lab bench. And part of the design would be that for every grade level, there would be a science bench at the far end of the learning commons where you might be able to do a STEM project or have a demonstration. You might be bringing kids together from multiple classes, or you might be bringing a whole class out there. So again, flexibility of different ways. Um, it could, sometimes there's an experiment that if you set it up in the classroom, it's really hard to then move on to math because all of these things are out. So that might be happening out here and one class is using it, and then another class is able to come out later while that class is back in the classroom. So just thinking about all of these sort of possibilities in terms of flexible and adaptable. And then I'll just point out again that in each learning neighborhood, there's one classroom that has a retractable wall. So that we know currently, we have some teachers who have that wall open and are co-teaching and have a double classroom, that option exists. It might not be all year long, it might be something that you periodically are bringing a larger group together, but the option exists. It also can support professional development when we're want, wanting to bring, you know, bigger groups of teachers together. So again, that adaptability and flexibility.
And are those all bathrooms on the bottom left there and each learning community has a set of those?
Each, so there are bathrooms strategically placed. That's a particularly large bathroom, uh, in terms of the number of stalls because it is the one closest to the gymnasium.
Okay.
And the, there has to be for, that would be accessible. Like if on the weekend, the school was open for use of the gymnasium, that is following the code of kind of what? So if you look across at this other side, that's a smaller bathroom.
Okay.
Still has plenty of stalls for cafeteria access to it. But this, we did ask at one point, it seems like an awful lot of stalls. They said, well, it has to do with the code to, to match what you need for the gymnasium.
So then you can, you can cut off access where that guideline is?
Right there.
Okay.
Yep. So you, so this is, you can segment here.
Yeah.
You can segment here, and then there's actually upstairs as well so that we can have community use in the evening or on the weekend of the gymnasium or cafeteria or the library media center.
And where are the faculty bathrooms on?
So they are in a few places. They are, um-
This is another deep conversation.
A lot of conversations.
Yeah.
So there are faculty bathrooms at the ends of the hallways. So that you could go up the stairs and go up or down. And then there are also at these ends, um, they, there are also some of these, and it's not well labeled on this, are actually individual student bathrooms. So that there are, again, that accessibility and inclusivity. Not all students are using that group bathroom. And so there is that option, um, throughout the building for individuals', um, bathrooms for children as well.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, trying to figure whether I'm going to formulate this as a question or stable. Um, as far as, um, flexibility, adjustability, or adaptability, I guess I should say, um, you, you spent some time talking about how these spaces are, are flexible and adaptable and doing some, using them for some different things. Um, but I want to just emphasize, and you have it in the heading, the future-ready comment. Didn't, didn't really spend much time on that. And I realize it's tough to predict the future, so you don't really know specifically what you can say about, um, uh, dealing with something that's going to come 20 years from now. But just the fact that the, I know that the architects and working with the district and the people attempted to do this. And when you build a facility like this and hope it lasts for 40, 50 years, you're, you're, you're hoping that, and some of it is hoping, right? But you're hoping that, um, it is going to be, um, flexible enough and adaptable enough to, to deal with things that you really don't know about right now. So I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that, but I just wanted to at least point, point that phrase out.
I mean, I think we had a lot of conversations around, um, consist, consistency of space across the, the different wings. Uh, there was some conversations, should second grade look different than fourth grade? And a lot of conversation kind of yielded the result that consistency in space across the building really allowed us a lot of flexibility. Also, we had conversations around, um, the simplicity of classrooms, the wall space. And we talked a lot about the library, what if, you know, what, what will libraries of the future look like? Will they look different? Will they be used, like, can we use that space in a different way? So a lot of thought around designing space in a simple manner that allows for future use. So you won't see a lot of unique features in a classroom or in a library space that would be really hard to convert that space for a different use.
Just, I thought I was saying, so the, so the other thing is, at the same time that we're trying to have that sort of adaptability and simplicity, there are some spaces within the building that were, you know, intentionally designed for what their purpose is, um, for that specialized learning. So this shows both the first floor and the second floor in terms of that front part of the building so that you can see some of these spaces. And I think it's important to realize, like, if we look, um, so one thing I'll point out on the first floor, just so you get a sense of this and then we'll zoom in more, is we have the cafeteria in orange over here, and it's a cafetorium. So it has the cafeteria, it has the kitchen, which is a working kitchen, um, unlike the current kitchen. And it also has a quiet dining space so that you can have, you can open it and have that open, again, flexibility, or it can be closed off so that for students who might be overwhelmed by the full kind of dining hall, there's an alternative. And then this last part of the orange is the stage. So the stage opens up to the cafeteria or the cafetorium, but also backs into the music space, which we'll talk about a little bit more as we go to the music. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out in the second floor is that you have your art room and space for a kiln in, in an adjacent attached room. And your world language rooms are across the hall. So they're again easily accessible from the first floor because they're right at the top of the stairs. But they're sort of, you know, they pushed into the neighborhood so that they're not, it's not a long trip for anyone. They are also, again, to the flexibility and adaptability, designed to, that they could be used if enrollment were changing, they could be used in a variety of ways. And then we have our media center, um, which will, you know, really be the center of the second floor, right at the top of the stairs. So in terms of just digging a little deeper with the music room, we have a, you know, highly developed, really, um, just an amazing music program. We have the benefit of being in the Neri building, and I know the same thing is happening at Woodward, where all day long, you know, the kids are going by, you're hearing the trombones and later you're hearing the clarinets and then you're hearing the flutes and, you know-
Tripping over the instruments.
Tripping over the instruments because right now they're all in the hallways because there is no storage or in the parking lots as they're called. So this is really, was a really important, a lot of discussion. There are two small ensemble rooms, and actually, if you go to the next slide where this is blown up. So there's two small ensemble rooms and then one large music room that is attached at the same level as the stage, and this is a retractable wall. So you could, for performances, open that wall and have a deeper stage so that you can then have greater capacity of performers. Or you can close it and your stage is a space with integrity and your large music room is another space where we have the performances. There's also instrument storage. We talked about the fact that this is right near the front entrance, so kids can drop their instruments off as they arrive. Um, you know, so a lot of different kind of details to having this whole music suite together. If there's anything else about music? In terms of, uh, physical education, the gymnasium, again, really keeping both community needs and the school's needs in mind. So this, as a full-sized gymnasium, can be used, has stands, can be, you know, a great asset for the community. We can segment the building off, as we said, to use it on the weekends. Within the school day, there's, can be a curtain to separate, to be able to run two classes at the same time. And as we mentioned, it's adjacent to the adaptive PE, um, the physical therapy and the occupational therapy. So that adaptive PE suite can also be used for other uses. It might be a small group yoga experience or mindfulness experience that's going on there. Um, so this really becomes kind of a whole suite of complementary services and opportunities for collaboration. Right next door, just to sort of show more details where the nurses', um, offices and exam rooms and spaces are. And then that special education conference room, and then to the right of that would be the main office.
Can I just point out one?
Absolutely.
So Jess, you'll also notice if you can highlight kind of the nurse, the nursing suite. Um, really thinking about if there is a, a need for a student to exit the building. The student does not need to go through the main entrance, that you can, um, you can go to, you can, uh, be picked up on the, the left side of the building. Again, really thinking about oftentimes if kids aren't feeling well, the last thing they want to do is be picked up in the main office. So, um, little thoughts in, in terms of design and, and what we experienced now to really enhance how we use space and how traffic flows through space. And that's just one small step forward. So I guess that's a, a long, I mean, did answer to, um, kind of the proposed building that will be brought forth, um, to the voters. Um, a lot of thought, um, input, feedback went into getting to this place. And I think that this is, uh, the project that's being brought forth. Um, just a question of what happens if this doesn't, um, pass? Um, and it's a great question. And I think it's important to note that that's a question that will need to be answered if this project doesn't pass. And then we'll need to go back, the community will need to go back to, uh, the question is how to, how to best meet the student's educational experience with, with space, whether it's existing space or new space community. Um, and I just want to highlight that this has been a five-year journey. A lot of thought and input, um, over the past five years, um, has gone into getting to this design. Um, I think that it began in, uh, two thousand nineteen, twenty. Uh, the, the capital committee formed a school research subcommittee to answer the question, can we consolidate schools? Can we close a school and fit into the three remaining schools? That was a question that we were tasked to answer as a leadership team. So we spent a lot of time looking at space, looking at programming, looking at septic capacity, occupancy permit, and then also setting some criteria that we thought would be really important to meet. Um, one was to maximize people, materials, and instructional resources. To maximize collaboration, faculty and staff, to minimize student transitions and increase continuity and coherence of the program. So we evaluated the existing space based on, um, some of the specific criteria, septic occupancy, but also, uh, those four criteria. Um, and what the evaluation demonstrated was that yes, fifth grade can fit at Trotier. So that is, that is a fact with septic capacity and, uh, occupancy permit. What we also discovered, if fifth grade moved to Trotier, that the fourth grade moving to Woodward, um, it does not fit, does not meet occupancy per, occupancy. Um, it doesn't meet program, programmatic needs. Um, all of the, the spaces that we talked about in terms of art and music, those spaces don't exist, um, in terms of the type of program we want to offer our, um, second, third, and fourth graders. So there would be a need to do something different, um, in terms of that, that space or a different space. Um, we looked at using Finn for pre-K one, two. Um, and, you know, we discovered that, that also would need, um, some modifications and some renovations in order to meet this, the number of students in the space needs and the programmatic needs. Um, so what we, the conclusion that we came to, um, was to meet the criteria was to look at having an early childhood center, pre-K one, um, and a two-through-five elementary school. Uh, that was the conclusion. We had a lot of conversation at the time around moving fifth grade to the middle school model. Um, we spent a lot of time talking about it with the principals. Keith has many years of experience as a middle school principal. Um, and it's, it's not- Um, and it's, it's not, it's not what we would recommend as we're thinking about, what's the next generation of facilities to educate students in? Is it possible? Absolutely. Um, does it meet the criteria we set forth? We don't think so. Um, so I think framing it that way is that a lot of thought, um, conversation went into it. And I think it's for us more than just what can we fit into? It's what is space that is designed for its purpose, um, for students and educators to use? So some of the rationale around, you know, why not move fifth grade to Trotier? Um, there is a body of research out there, I think, um, in public comments, some of it was mentioned, there's other. Um, they, the research really speaks to having a pre-K through six continuum. That sixth grade actually in many instances, instances better suited for the elementary model. Um, and therefore one can extrapolate that fifth grade is part of that pre-K through six continuum. And it makes sense to have that, um, as, as the model. There are school systems in the area that, that have, uh, fifth grade as part of the middle school. Shrewsbury, for example, very intentional design, partnering with MSBA, designed a model that worked for its community. It has a five, six school and a seven, eight school. Designed intentionally, um, for developmental continuum and the student experience. Those were MSBA projects. Um, Lincoln was mentioned. So Lincoln has two pre-K through eight schools. They are pre-K through eight schools. One of their, um, elementary schools, which is a pre-K through eight, it's all in one building. They just did an addition and renovation of that space. So they have group students, pre-K through four and five through eight in the same building. They designed the spaces with intentionality. That if you were to go visit that school, you could see how fifth and sixth grade can be truly separated from seventh and eighth grade in the design. So we think that, um, the model we're putting forth, the pre-K, uh, the two through five really speaks to developmental responsiveness that, you know, second, third, fourth and fifth graders in terms of where they are in development makes a lot of sense. Um, we thought a lot about, you know, nine and 10-year-olds with, with 13-year-olds. There's just a great continuum there, just in terms of adolescent development. We spent a lot of time thinking about academics and teaching and learning and the types of experiences we want students to have at, uh, in our schools. Um, you know, so we, we think about the continuum of experience, pre-K through five. Many of their curriculum and learning experiences that we have are connected pre-K through five by design. Um, so, you know, when we think about our, our mathematics curriculum, our science curriculum, um, it, I think it's by design that we have a pre-K through five. And it's helpful to have fifth grade educators with our fourth grade educators and our third grade educators. There's a lot of collaboration and conversation and professional learning that takes place around the intentional curriculum that we've put in place. Um, also, you know, um, in terms of licensure, which is not the, not the end-all of moving fifth grade to the middle school model. Um, but the middle school licensure is typically content-specific. So you can have a five through eight content-specific license. So for example, a math license, five through eight. Currently, the model that we have with our fifth grade educators, they have a K through six license. They don't have content-specific licenses. Um, and again, that's by design, that's, that's the model that we have. Educators shift from, from grade levels as cohorts move through, class sizes are dependent on how many sections we need. Um, so, so would we require having fifth grade at the middle school? For us to, to think about having a different licensure requirement for our fifth grade educators? Could it be accomplished? Yes, but, um, it's not the design that we currently have. Um, so that, some of the academic reasons, some of the educator licensure rationale and operational challenges that we're not able to, with a building that we have that was designed for six, seven and eight, to really segment experiences. We can't say we're going to make this space just fifth grade and it's going to be a self-contained sixth grade or fifth grade or sixth grade. That the way the design, the building is designed and the way space is organized is that it would be really hard to do. Um, so that's one of the space challenges we have. Um, our specials, music, art, uh, you know, Keith has done scheduling for many years, would be challenging adding another grade level to that model. Not impossible, but again, it would be really challenging. The cafeteria space. So if you've seen the cafeteria here at Trotier, um, it, it would not accommodate three lunches. It's, it's not large enough, so we'd have to move to a four-lunch model. Could it be done? Yes, but again, we would be able to segment fifth graders from, from other, you know, sixth graders or seventh graders or eighth graders. Um, and then lastly, you know, transportation. So the way our current transportation system exists is that students in grades six through eight ride with students in grades nine through twelve. So we would, we would add fifth grade to, um, students in classes and the continuum would be fifth through twelfth graders driving classes. Um, is it impossible? No. Could we fit into the building? Yes. Is it our recommendation? No. Um, our recommendation really would center around if this is not the option for the community and this does not pass, to go back and think about, you know, what are, what are the educational goals? What is our plan? And how can we use space and design space to meet those needs? Any commentary?
Do you come up with a line?
Thank you.
I have a question, Greg. So I, so I mean, you, if I heard you correctly, there's, it is possible to move to, like, let's say, next year, you could move in fifth graders into this, into Trotier. But it didn't sound like you could necessar- that you would necessarily be enabled to next year accommodate a K through four, pre-K through four without, at least not, maybe not even in the short term, certainly not in the long term without capital-intensive projects at the two other schools. Is that accurate?
That is, and we would, you know, we would be segmenting program. So for example, we have a fourth, a fifth grade band program. So the fifth grade would be part of the middle school, but the fourth grade would be on its own. And the spaces we move into, you know, we don't have a space where we can, we can have band practice like we do at, at the Currie, because it was designed for that purpose.
And then you'd end up compromising the programs at the middle school because we don't have the design spaces to run as many specials at the same time.
Yeah.
So you would have to reduce specials probably for all grade levels and instrument lessons and all those things. So we'd, we'd be compromising the programs at both ends.
Yeah, there's the, there's certainly lacking quality, but then, but I mean, just like actually it's physically possible. Also, it's not.
And if you think about our fifth grade model, students are with their teachers all day long. With some, you know, with movement to their specials and things, but the same teacher teaches math, reading, you know, science for the most part. If they're in a building, but we can't contain them just with each other, but then the other grade levels are all moving in between every period. Like when things are moving here, you know, the whole building's kind of buzzing.
Yeah.
So then you've got the fifth grade scattered within, not on that model. So that's, that's some of the disconnects as well.
I have three questions. Uh, the questions I think are longer than the answers will be. Um, just a quick question on Finn. You know, I know that hadn't wasn't discussed. Um, is Finn, is Finn ADA compliant? And by that, I mean if we had to, um, do something with Finn that would trigger, whatever it is that gets triggered to require ADA compliance, then the answer is Finn isn't currently ADA compliant.
Not completely.
I understand.
Correct. So if there was a significant project greater than thirty percent of its value, then it would trigger all of the ADA compliance.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, second question. And I think we, this is, this is back to the, moving the fifth grade into Trotier. I think, I don't know that you ended up saying it this way, but I think what I heard, and I just want to have someone confirm what I heard is that moving the fifth grade to Trotier does not work programmatically. Is that a true statement?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you. And here's my third question. It relates to what we're voting on here. Uh, in other words, we're taking a vote on how the school committee feels on moving the fifth grade to Trotier, right? That's the, the votes are, and that's the first vote?
Yeah.
So if, i- i- is this vote really? If the town was to actually turn down the proposal for, that the, the other committee is putting forth?
Yeah.
Then would we recommend moving the fifth grade to Trotier? And that, I mean, I'm trying to understand exactly what we're voting on here. I mean, I would, but I don't know.
So I think it's important that the school committee, I think it's important that the public understand what the school committee's position is on moving fifth grade to Trotier. And if the vote were to fail on May tenth, then, um,
If somebody came back and said, hey, what about moving the fifth grade to Trotier?
Yeah, I think it's important that the public understand that if, if the vote fails on May tenth and the school committee's taken a position on whether or not to move fifth grade, I think that needs to be known. And I think to Greg's point, um, I think we need to know whether we would take Greg's recommendation to go back to the drawing board or just move into, um, if, if the school committee's okay with moving fifth grade to Trotier, then that would be a different path than going back to the drawing board.
Well, if we want money from the state, we have to go back to the drawing board.
But, as I said.
As opposed to, you know, oh, well, let's stuff some kids here and stuff some kids over there and, you know, not focus really at all on educational benefits. But, I mean, and, you know, we don't, we don't need the money from the state. That's what we're effectively saying, which is, um, my view, really good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. You, you agree with that? Okay.
I think that what's before the town is a grade two through five school. Um, and that if it does not pass, then the question comes back to the community. What, what is, a sort of, what is another solution that the community can support? Which could be a wide variety of options.
Anybody else have any?
All right. But you feel like, Greg, I mean, as you stated, this, it's not like we, it's not like this was, hey, we've just picked a solution, so five-year process. So it's not like, hey, we're going to go back to the drawing board. It's suddenly gonna illuminate some new, much better idea, right? So I mean, at the end, we could say that, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be something we've discussed about and it's some, we're sacrificing something that has to do with, I think, what you guys have, have put forth as the highest quality solution that balances obviously spending.
Yeah, we believe that the solution, what's not a solution is just expose the building and then squeeze kids into the existing buildings. Uh, we believe that something needs to be done with Neri. Um, and, you know, we believe, you know, the work and the design, um, is, is our best thinking based on educational planning, but also thinking about, you know, the use of facilities in the community. Um, you know, if, if we continue with a pre-K one, two, three, four, five model, we need to do something with Neri and the community will need to, um, tackle Finn at some point in the next decade or two.
Sorry, this is a little bit outside the scope of this, but along those lines, I mean, if, if we have to, and I'm sure you guys have talked about this, maybe it's just, you know, available somewhere, but like if along the lines, it's like, well, you know, ten years down the line, it's like, well, maybe Finn's not, is, it's just more worthwhile to close. And then it's like, do you ever go to a model where it's K through five, two buildings? You know, K through five? Well, actually, if you close, you closed Woodward two, you add K through five and then six through eight. I mean, how adaptable maybe is the new school to renovate, like a major renovation? Um, I don't have to get into this, to be honest.
One part of the MSBA process is that you have to have a plan for where you could add to the building. So that is, um, so if it were a question of needing an addition?
Yeah.
It is built into the process that they could already show us. This is how you would add to this building.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, obviously it's not, seems modular to some degree. Where it's like, oh, we're gonna add another name, then, oh, whatever, K through, K through, pre-K, K one, Woodward, two through five.
Yeah.
Anyways, all right, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, um, I guess I'd just like to touch a bit upon personal experience as well as it relates to this conversation in terms of potentially putting fifth into this building. So I went to the schools in Southborough, I went to Trotier. And I think just thoughtful construction based on configuration of grades is so critical. In reflecting on my, on my experience, again, this was years and years ago, but I think Southborough schools just generally have done such a good job in keeping grades together. In terms of just like fostering a safe, comfortable learning environment for children of that developmental age and a plethora of other reasons. So I think the, the notion of potentially kind of putting kids into this building where it wasn't configured in a way to foster that, um, you know, keeping grades together, um, could be really tough and could be a huge challenge for students. Um, you know, again, in keeping those like, you know, I remember, you know, coming here, there was, there's a wing for the sixth graders, the seventh graders and the eighth graders. And while you're integrated with everyone else in the school, there's that comfort of like, I'm with my peers. I'm with, you know, we're able to collaborate in a way that fosters learning, growth and development in the appropriate, you know, way for it for our ages. So I guess I just wanted to call that out from personal experience, but also in just like how thoughtful design and configuration kind of come together in a way that I think is, is so critical to making sure that our students and children are having the best experience that they possibly can in these schools. So just wanted to, just wanted to mention.
Yeah, I know it's getting late and we didn't, I mean, this presentation wasn't meant to kind of give the full overview like the building subcommittee meetings have. Um, but something that's kind of not spoken to, but is a really big, uh, part of, um, voting tonight is like the, um, security measures, like that are embedded in the, like in the wall, you know, in the school and just the actual design of the school. How are we gonna pay to heat and cool it and, you know, the geothermal, um, methodology and parking spaces, um, you know, the doors, you know, just all of those things that bring us to the twenty, twenty-six and seven. Um, there's, there's a cost to it, but I think the reward is, um, is well, well, well worth it um, for the decades that it's intended to be here for. So, um, those are some of the things that we didn't go over tonight, but I got through the presentations, um, that were given online or, you know, through the walkthroughs or in person.
Thank you. Um, I think two comments, um, I think are, one of the school committee's main roles is to make sure that our students have the best experience that they can. And I think that is always top of our mind in every meeting that we attend and any decision that we make. We just went through budget season, right? And we, we had to kind of weave through the best decisions that we could make. It wasn't a great, it wasn't an easy budget season, but I think everybody on this committee and the administration and the faculty and staff, um, that's our goal. And I think as we look into the future of what Southborough schools are gonna look like, I think making sure that we have those programs and that we're not I think making sure that we have those programs and that we're not sacrificing them is really my biggest concern or point of view as I look at this project. And, you know, we're always looking to do more with less, right? And I think we, I think we see that in the district's approach to how we utilize our resources, how we reconfigure things so that we can make experiences better, but, you know, think, do, do it in an outside-of-the-box mentality. And so, I think, given what Greg's presented this evening, I think moving fifth grade to Trotier, we would sacrifice a lot of that. And, and that's what my main concern is about that move. Also, my second point is just thinking about, you know, yeah, we, do we have the space right now to do it? We do. It's not the recommendation, but we have it. Is, is that space really available at FIN and Woodward to do it? Maybe we could squeeze everything in now, but in ten years, when FIN needs to be remodeled, what do we do with all those kids? Right? We're, we're gonna have nowhere else to go, and we're probably gonna have some temporary, something, some, some temporary classrooms or something over there. And I just don't, I just don't feel good about being at the, being at the brink of an overloaded school, if enrollment were to shift or anything, and then needing to do another, being at this point, again, needing to do another construction project. I think that the proposal that's in front of us is, essentially takes any school construction project off the table after this one for the next twenty-five years. And I think it really sets the community up for a great future for our school system. And I think as school committee, that's what, that's, that's one of the most important things that we can do as a committee, so. Anybody else have any other comments? Are we ready to vote?
And is this vote for FIN and Woodward?
I, I think we, well, that's, that's...
Trotier?
Trotier.
Or is that the second vote?
The first. But I have it listed as first. So, I'm gonna actually move that the school committee not support moving, moving fifth grade to Trotier middle school.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's all. Thank you. All right, so next vote is move that the school committee support the MIRI building project for a grade two to five school as presented this evening. Is there a second?
Seconds.
All right. All in, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone, that special town meeting is May tenth at nine AM at Albonquin. And that is an in-person meeting. You cannot do anything related to that remote. That has to pass two-thirds. And then on the, there, there will be a question on the ballot, which is the local election ballot on May thirteenth. That question will be on the ballot regardless if the town meeting passes it or not. And the question will also be available if you do mail-in voting prior to. So, both of those have to pass, two-thirds at town meeting and fifty percent at the ballot. So, it's important that you vote on both. Next, school choice vote. So, we had our public hearing earlier this evening. So, I will move that we support the superintendent's recommendation to not opt in to school choice for the next school year.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Guys, one more question here.
Go ahead.
Is this, this is reviewed every year?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Every year.
Yeah. All right. All in favor? All right. Zero, thank you. Enrollments.
So, in your packet is the monthly enrollment reports. We continue to look closely at kindergarten enrollment. I did connect with Principal Ryan today, and we're at two, one sixteen. So, we're right as we were projecting, but we'll continue to monitor that closely. And I will turn it over to Becky for the financial reports.
Okay, so, in terms of the function codes that have been over expended, there are two new function codes, and they are substitute short-term, twenty-three, twenty-five, and attendant services, thirty-one hundred. The substitute short-term, we've actually gone through and tried to do our best projections for the remainder of the year, and so that's what that figure, the four eighty-nine seventy-four represents. And then for the attendant services, that is actually based on historical data. And I can tell the committee that the FY twenty-six budget does reflect a three thousand dollar budget amount. So, that will hopefully be corrected in next year's budget and moving forward. The monthly general funds report that is included in your packet is as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and that represents the first three quarters of the fiscal year, so three down, one to go. And the bottom line balance is forty-seven thousand seventy-four dollars or point one nine percent of the operational budget. And that balance is lower by about twenty-six thousand dollars from the previous month. Over the past month, we've really been working closely with the schools and the departments to review any of our open purchase orders and to look at our budget line items. So, we have actually freed up some funds by doing that exercise. But some of the line items that we are really watching closely are our long-term substitutes. That's actually a new line item for this fiscal year. So, we're really seeing the true cost of some of our medical leaves that happen throughout the year. So, we're really watching that one closely. We also have increased encumbrances for our heating and our electricity costs. I'm sure you've all heard on the news about the increase in the supply charges, and we're experiencing those increases as well. And then lastly, we continue to monitor the Tudor Home Hospital for that complex student case that we've been working on this year. So, at this point, I would ask the committee to vote to approve both the monthly general fund report as well as those line items that are showing as over expended.
Just give the vote on the general fund report.
Yeah, sure.
And the transfers. So, only that we accept the Southborough Public School list with fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget, monthly general fund expenditure report as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, until audited, and that we accept the fund transfers as presented tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
And then lastly, just an update on our revolving accounts. They really continue to hold steady month to month with no real variances. The food services, we continue to protect a healthy balance in the revolving account. Facility rental, I will point out that there was a new encumbrance that was entered in March, and that was for some repairs to the roof at the FIN school. We also are continuing to collect summer camp deposits for the SEDP summer camp. We're actually working and we're breaking those out. So, at next month's meeting, I should be able to provide the committee with more detail on, on what is meant for, the revenue that's meant for the summer versus for this current fiscal year. And then lastly, the preschool, we are continuing to receive the deposits for the preschool program for next year. And the collections, we're continuing to maintain the tuition collection. So, I really don't have any concerns with any of the revolving accounts.
Any questions on revolving accounts? Next is personnel report.
Sure, so, in your packets, the personnel report as of April ninth. Just to highlight one item. Kyle Parsons, who was the food services manager for pre-K through eight Northborough and pre-K through eight Southborough, has accepted another position. So, his last day will be next week. Keith has been working closely with the food services staff to have a plan in place. Kyle's in absence. And I think it also speaks to some of the work that Keith and the team is doing around evaluating potentially a food services contract.
All right, go back to Kyle, I use, you will.
I will share that with him. Thank you.
And thank you for all the, all the questions that he's answered for me for the last two years.
Yeah.
Mike, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask a quick question on the, on the preschool revolving account?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, the fund balance on the report as of March thirty-first is the hundred and seventy-four thousand. So, then the anticipated fund balance, the two, that's, how is that calculated?
So, if you, the fund balance as of March thirty-first, that's one seventy-four.
Yeah.
And then we have anticipated revenues of one hundred and eleven thousand. So, we expect to collect those between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so, the anticipated fund is the end of year.
Yeah, I should probably add a note on it, like, where we expect to end up on June thirtieth.
I thought that that might be the date, but I think it wasn't.
Yes. I'll, I'll add that for next time.
I said, just an easy question on the personnel report. Did one person, you know, they're, they're both in the appointment and the resignation. They came in and left within the same month? Is that what happened?
Who?
Fadwa Ee?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering.
Took the job, lost the job.
Okay.
Is that food services?
It is.
Yeah. And you said, you kind of said at the end there, Greg, and this speaks to a little bit of what Keith is doing with the food services contract. What is, what's happening there? Like...
So, we've gone out for RFP, for a request for proposals. We've received a few of those, and we're in the process of evaluating those proposals. And our hope is to make a recommendation to Greg and then subsequently each of the school committees for the May agenda cycle. So, Northborough, in early May, you follow, and then the region. And if the recommendation is to move forward with a food services management company, then the permission of each committee would be required for us to negotiate, to finalize a contract.
No? Wow.
To be a one-year contract.
Oh, okay. And District North and South?
Anne Reid.
Anne Reid, no, okay. Is it one that someone from the school board brought to you as a suggestion, or you went out and...
We went out for a public procurement tour.
That was the start of it.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, this is, that's good news.
I think they should also, if we take the training, I also think we should be able to stop by for lunch.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Can be arranged.
All right. Next, we have some meeting minutes we need to address. Does anybody have any changes to the set of five meeting minutes?
I'm gonna go with Noah.
All right.
I have someone each.
No, you don't.
All right, so I'll move that we approve the operational budget subcommittee special open meeting minutes of March sixth, twenty twenty-five, special open meeting minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, open meeting minutes, open meeting minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, special open meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and special open meeting minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, that's all. Well, thank you. So, next month for May, as Keith just mentioned, we'll talk about the food service presentation and potentially approve a contract for food services management company. We'll have ELA presentation. We'll do election of officers. And then in June, we'll talk about...
Dr. Wall committed a committee member with some pictures.
Yeah, we'll have a committee member. And in June, we'll have an update on transportation. And just a reminder that our next regularly scheduled twelve committee meeting is May fourteenth here at six-thirty, and the next combined meeting is Monday, June sixteenth at Albonquin at five-thirty. So...
And then consider those two things that I've mentioned that you might want to add to the agenda. Yeah. It's up to you all.
Yeah. And whether it's in individual or...
Or the combined, yeah.
Okay, good. All right. We don't have any public likes, so I think we have any public comment. So, with that, I'm going to move that we enter into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto and not reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and for this, we need a roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Chelsea's yes. All right, thank you very much.